Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call the March 9, 2021 Regular Planning and zoning Commission meeting to order. We'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance, please. Join me?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, just a quick reminder for everybody out there. You wouldn't mind, please, turning your cellphones off or turning them to vibrate or do not disturb? We'd certainly appreciate it. We have a roll call, please.
Stephenson?
Here.
Carey?
Here.
Kimball?
Present.
Latham?
Here.
Schlothauer?
Here.
Hampi?
Here.
Okay. John, do we have any amendments to the agenda today?
There's none.
Okay. Moving on, do we have any ceremonies, announcements, appointments, or presentations?
I just wanted to clarify, Mark Latham, some of you may not have seen him up here at the Planning and Zoning Commission here. And so, the purpose for him being here is we are hearing, the first public hearing tonight, is on impact fees.
Okay.
Title 67, Chapter 82 of the Idaho State statutes pertaining to development impact fees requires that two or more members shall be active in the business or development, building, or real estate. And so, Ray Kimball and Mark Latham serve as those roles to meet the requirement to have a Development Impact Review Board review the impact fees. So, just wanted to get that out and open it, why some, I may wonder why Mark's here.
Okay. Thank you, John. Moving on to declarations of conflict, do we have any of those tonight?
No.
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 I don't either, seeing none. We will move on to the consent calendar. John Manley?
Yeah, Item A is the meeting minutes from February 9, 2021, and Item B is the reasoned decision for Tullamore Vista Annexation, file number ANNX 72020.
Okay. Looking for a motion? Commission?
I move to approve the consent calendar as presented.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Roll call, please.
Hampi?
Yes.
Schlothauer?
Yes.
Latham?
Abstain.
Kimball?
Yes.
Carey?
Improvement and hence less dollars collected if there was more growth. There would be a need for a higher level of improvements and a higher cost associated with that. So then, taking those, those bottom line levels of service factors and the costs associated with those. They all get combined to get to the, to the proposed or recommended impact fee. That is the maximum allowable based on, again, the methodology. Deployed and the cost factors associated with those, with those elements. So, all told, between the park, park land. Land costs, improvement costs, indoor recreation costs. And a general fund reduction, I mentioned the credit at the outset. So this is a reduction that's then an acknowledgement that a portion of a general fund. Has been consistently used for the, for the similar types of improvements. Similar types of costs on a capacity level. And so, the intent here is to avoid a potential double payment with. New residents and businesses paying, residents, excuse me, paying property taxes or other taxes that would support. The park improvements and so the reduction there is an embedded credit into the, into the calculation. And so the proposed fees here you'll see in green for a multifamily unit. At $2,769 for a single family unit, $3,721. We also include in these summaries a comparison to the current fees. These, this is the schedule as of July 2019. And the single family rate is the rate for the largest size housing unit that's in the current schedule, the four bedroom plus. So that $23, $2,340.89 is the larger of the two single family units on the schedule. And then, next to that column, you'll see in the far right. The, the potential increase if adopted at the maximum level. Moving on to the next category, for public safety, the components here are. Or the infrastructure components are the police, the police station space, support facility space, wireless communication sites. And then other communication facilities. This, this screen here, this slide here is a snapshot of. Again, the current levels of service, how much is provided currently per person, per non-residential vehicle trip. Which is the demand base used for, for non-residential development. And then the cost factor associated with each of those elements. So summarizing, taking again, the same kind of structure as was provided in the parks and rec. Fee, level of service and projected need. As we did for parks, this is the same, same type of slide for public safety. Where this, the top portion is a summary of the level of service and cost factors. And the bottom portion indicates how much of each type of facility. Would be demanded if projections happen as, as we've, as we've identified, again. Given a, a, an incremental approach, any faster growth would require. A higher, a higher amount of facility and cost and revenue collection as, as, as well as the reverse. If it were, or the converse, if it were less, there would be less of a demand for facilities, infrastructure and less costs associated. So combined, the public safety impact fees, unlike the parks, are, are allocated to both residential and non-residential growth. Just as they've been in the past and the current schedule. And so the, and what we've shown here, just for sake of, of fitting onto, fitting one, one schedule onto one slide. As we've condensed the non-residential schedule, schedule here, just for, for purposes, viewing purposes here. I do have a slide with the laundry list of facility, of land uses and that is also in the main, in the report. So, we again have a summary of the cost components, the general fund reduction, similar to parks. The net costs and then the proposed fees here in green. So you'll notice here, there is a slight reduction to the, to the current. To the, the fee that's in place today for, for a variety of reasons. One of which is household sizes have decreased slightly and a component. One, animal services, animal shelter facility is not included in this, in this fee, in this fee schedule. There is adequate capacity and, and no debt, debt, no payments left on that, on the facility. And so unlike past studies, is not included in this fee schedule. Okay, moving on to the last two components, we have streets and then multimodal paths. So with streets, I mentioned it's a plan-based approach. We have a, a master plan, a transportation, the thoroughfare plan that identifies short-term, medium-term and long-term. City, city projects of which a portion will be city funded and a portion will, will have funding from. A portion of those projects have funding from other sources. And so the impact fee is based on the cost to the city, the city's cost. And so you'll see in the, the middle portion here, estimated city CIP costs of about $41 million. Over, over about, over 20 years, a 20-year timeframe. And so that, that cost minus the current impact fee balance. Is allocated to projected trips over that same time period. So what we're, we're projecting over the demand and the beneficiaries of those, of those improvements over the next 20 years. To get to a bottom line level, level service and cost per trip of about $242. So that factor is used to, in the impact fee schedule. And applied, again, the proposed fees are shown in, in the green column with a. By using trip rates, again, average daily trip rates for both residential and non-residential. And again, this is an excerpt from the full impact fees, the full non-residential schedule. So we mentioned multimodal paths are a new category, is really an extension of the transportation piece. We have identified a, again, a level of service. For both residential and non-residential development and the cost to provide that same level of service into the future. And we should note too, that these reflect system-level paths. They're not interior project level improvements. They are system-level interconnected pathways that provide an alternative. Alternative, again, a multimodal alternative to transportation. And as part of the study, there is a, a list of those projects that are, that are. In, in the, in, on the plant, in planning and that are planned by the city. And those really, those reflect those system level, level improvements. This, the, the final impact fee, either the final portion of the impact fee. For multimodal paths is summarized here for, again, both residential and non-residential. Proposed fees in green, there is no comparable current fee today. So this is, that's shown as zeroed out there. So we'll see here, the, the multi, multifamily multimodal pathway fee at about $647 per unit. On a single family unit at $869 per unit. So in combination, in total, this is, the slide reflects, shows the full fee schedule. With the four categories and the grand total for, by land use. And again, we have expanded the non-residential land use category. So this is the full listing currently of, of what is proposed to be the new schedule. So a multifamily unit in total at 4,606, a single family unit in total of 6,552. Comparing this to the current fee schedule. The bottom line here, shown at, at the, in the manner, in the, the structure of the current fee schedule. Again, with single family by bedroom count and a smaller, a shortened list of, of non-residential land uses. And then combining the two, you can see at a glance here on this last, in this last table slide. Of the change, this is the change between current and proposed in each category and in total. So this is kind of gives you an at-a-glance of, of the changes between, again, current and proposed.
Julie, really quick, can you, so on our screen, the, the total change is blocked by your. Can you tell us what the total change is for multifamily and single family?
Sure, sure. Multifamily is 1,916. And single family is 2,188.
Thank you.
Okay, and, and just briefly, I had received some, a previous questions. Just, just sort of a, a general kind of touching on it. I touched on a little bit in the main, in the main presentation about. Credits to, for, to a certain extent. So there, I mentioned the credits that are embedded in the, in the calculation. Again, prevention of double payment, potential double payment of taxes. That could, that would, that have typically been used to pay for the similar types of things that the impact fees are for. The other type of credit is really after the fact where a, a payer may be eligible for a credit. Or a reimbursement or a reduction. When a system-level improvement is made or land dedication is made. Again, for the types and level of improvements that are included in the fee, the fee categories. And so, the distinction here is between system-level improvements and project-level improvements. And so those types of things that are typically, that are required as part of the development approval process that are conditions, conditions of approval. Are not eligible, would not be eligible for credits. And so just, just to make, make that distinction and, and we can talk, talk more if there are questions surrounding that. But again, this is after, this is not included, this is not embedded in the calculation itself. But this is really on the implementation piece. And this is again, having, you know, having the city, have, city having had a program in place for so long. This is not anything new. It's, it's, it's similar to the kinds of discussions that have gone on, you know, for years. But again, just to, to highlight that again and to make that distinction. And then, I did receive a question on, on the household sizes of multifamily units. And so we're really looking, I just want to make sure that when, you know, the demand factor on the household size is a key component here for single family and multifamily. This is from the US Census, specific to the city of Post Falls. So this is local data, it's tracked and updated annually and it reflects the average number of persons. You know, in, in a housing unit by type of unit, by multifamily, by single family. And the data indicates that multifamily units in the city of Post Falls have fewer residents per unit on average. I just want to identify that. And with that, I'm happy to take questions, discussion. And I will pull down my screen share so I can, we can all get a full, full view. And I thank you very much for your time.
Do you have any questions for Julie?
I, I have a couple of questions. When was the current impact fee adopted?
I believe that it was 2010.
2010, okay. And then on the, on the, the non-residential development fee spreadsheet there. Is that, so it's saying like commercial slash retail, the total is $4.31. Is that like a square foot or, okay, that's a square foot, correct, okay. And then when it comes down to hotels. That is, that 1449 is actually per room. Gotcha, okay. That makes sense, thank you, that's, that's it.
I, I have a question. I still don't understand, I heard your description, but I still don't understand what a multimodal path is, our new category that we're adding in this year. And so I want to understand what that is and why we're adding it in.
Okay. And I can, I'm having the benefit of seeing city staff, but a multimodal path is a. Pathway that provides an alternative, alternative to vehicular traffic. So pedestrian, bicyclists, skateboard, scooters, you know, not automated, but, you know. That provide, that is a, again, an alternative to roadway vehicular traffic. To alleviate, you know, some of the stress on, from, from roads. But provides an interconnected, you know, a point A to point B as opposed to internal to a, as a, as a wholly recreational trail. Internal to a park facility, say, you know, for example. So it is meant as a, again, a multi, a, other than, other than multimodal, meaning other than vehicular. Traffic facility.
That's always non-motorized, right?
Can you give us an example? Do we have, do we have anything existing like the Centennial Trail, is that what you're talking about or?
The Centennial Trail would be an example of that as well as some other facilities that we have in the community. I'm with that, but the Centennial Trail is definitely a very good example of that, yes.
Do we have any other questions?
Yeah, so there's forecasting in here for 10 years and I thought I even saw 20. And then I was reading, I guess this is try, you try to do this every five years, obviously we're a little late. So what's our, what's our goal with this? Are we going to try to do it every five years? Obviously there's lots of growth around here. I see Bill.
So I'm seeing a nod of yes from Bill.
That is the goal to do it every five years. Like we said, this process has taken us a little bit longer. The, just because we couldn't be before people, it took us a while to adapt to the new style of getting the information out. But the goal is to, to process it every five years, we would adopt new capital improvement plans subsequent to those capital improvement plans. And then we would try to move forward and, and adopt new impact fees that are based on those new improvement plans, so. Growth changes, the capital improvement plans change. And that's how we adapt to it, so.
So would our, would our roadmap, considering everything that's going on, we're looking at like 2026 to do this again, along with everything else that goes into this?
We, we will probably start some processes this year even of adopting our, of looking at our new transportation master plan. Because of that, we're, we're going to, we're looking at hiring someone to come in and do our traffic counts this year and begin that process as well. One of the reasons that we converted to trips, to just trips from a combination of trips and vehicle miles traveled. Because we can make a, a change to that capital improvement plan. We know what the projected trips are, if there's a demand or something comes up. It makes it a little more adaptable for staff to adjust those impact fees accordingly to modifications with our transportation plan. So that was, like I said, one of the main reasons we switched solely to trips, it just made it easier for staff to manage.
So Bill, I had a quick question for you and it has to do with system level versus project level. The definition between the two, I would think that the system level would be multimodal pathways that are identified in the transportation master plan, is that correct?
Correct, so, so we determined the. How many linear feet of multimodal facilities we currently had in there? And then determine, okay, what was that value, what is it going to take to replace that? And once we had that, that value in there, then we, we looked at our, our transportation master plan in there and said, okay, it'll have to fit within there. So if improvements are outside of that capital improvement list, they, they would not be eligible for a credit or a reimbursement. If the, if that specific improvement is included in that list and it was along the front of a development and that developer came in. Then they would be eligible to request that list. It wasn't, it wasn't to cover every pathway, every sidewalk, everything that was built within the community. Just those that were established from the transportation master plan as being, as being critical to interconnect the entire system.
So there's a lot of pathways that are shown on the transportation master plan that are not in that capital improvement plan, how did you choose?
I, I think we just went through and prioritized, once we had a dollar value established through there, we went through and said, what, what really are the priorities? Staff went through and said, what are the priorities for establishing those? What seemed, what seemed to provide the most connectivity, what were the most missing pieces, what provided the most safety?
I guess my question would be. Adding those new pathways that we want to have into as an impact fee is basically assigning the, the cost of those to newcomers. Why would we, why would those be a cost for newcomers versus a cost for the community?
A lot of the, as, as we grow, a lot of the ability for someone to let's say ride a bike along an existing city street. It has that safety issue, those type of things become more problematic as we increase traffic. As, which we have done quite a bit over the last few years. So it's those impacts on, on the community where we, those facilities could maybe weren't needed before so much. Because of the traffic was lower, the, the, the community was calmer from a transportation standpoint. Now that we have much more traffic, we've got to find ways to get people off, you know, off of the street with those facilities. So that is why growth, that's the impact due to growth.
Any other questions?
I think I had one and it has to do with regards to the change in, really the park impact fee is, it's a pretty significant jump. And 40, 40 to 50% or so, or almost double actually.
And so Dave Fair and, and his team are here this evening online and so I'm going to let them speak specifically to their category of impact fees.
Dave, could you maybe speak to the, why the, why the increase in price and how that. How that is different versus the same level of service?
And you're here in person.
I'm here in person, it just felt like the right thing to do, so thank you for giving me that opportunity to speak to you folks. It is a big increase, but you asked when the last impact fees were done, it was in 2012. At that time, a reduction was made on the impact fees that the city was collecting for parks by 34%. And we were told, well, we'd come back in a, two to three years to revisit it, see how the economy was doing and everything. Well, we see how long that's taken. So yes, there is a large increase, but our costs have gone up dramatically. Not just that 34% cut that we had to then absorb into the general fund and or through donations and grants. But we've seen a real change in the industry of developing parks. If any of you have watched some of the council meetings where we brought forward some of the new parks. An average park is running about three million, two and a half to three and a half million. That's a eight-acre neighborhood park, it's expensive. We have ADA issues that we have to, to bring in. We're another form of construction, for those of you involved in construction, it's gotten expensive. We follow the same rules and regulations, the same engineering, engineers, they're costing me a fortune. And then you add just the general cost of construction. This lasts, in the last couple of months, the price of metal steel has gone up 27%. A lot of stuff in parks is metal, so that's why you're seeing some of this. Land prices have gone up and I know we've, you see a big increase in there, but if you look at the, the numbers. When we started this process and it's taken time, we projected parkland level one at 65,000 an acre. And level two, that's our little further out undeveloped open space at 25,000. Those numbers are nowhere near where the market is right now. I checked before the last meeting, just the day before, looking at all the land that was available. And available here, 34 lots were available at that time, so I, I didn't check today. I fear that was bad luck or something. I think five or six of those were pending. The only one that would fall under a level one category was just shy of 300,000 an acre. So, yes, the costs are going up, but our costs have just risen dramatically. And we cut it back before, so. Does that answer it?
It, it does, thank you.
Mike, I have a question for you, so are you, are you speaking as far as land acquisition for parks? Most of the parks that go in are a part of the requirement on the developer when they go in. And the guy's paying these impact fees by that land and then they have to give it to you. And then pay the impact fee on top of that, so I understand those parks. What other, are you, I mean, I know we bought this property on the other side of the river over here. What, what kind of parks are we, are we purchasing other than what is in new development?
To give you an idea of what we've purchased, we have five acres at Corbin Park was the Alon Selmo property that we added to that park. Black Bay, another five acres, that was just in the last few years. We purchased 3.8 or 3.9 acres on Cecil and Horse Haven. When Tolomor came in, part of that agreement was purchasing 8.5 acres of that, that became the sports complex. Warren Playfield was purchased with impact fees, the Black Bay Depot utilizing the indoor component, that was a purchase there. Expansion of the landing, there was land that was exacted with that development when they did everything, but it wasn't enough to build a public space. So sometimes it's adding on to existing spaces, sometimes it's buying outright land. The May, of course, the May property you mentioned, the crutch was the one in 2002 was the first one, so it's a combination. So we've bought over 110 acres since 2002. Not all of the parcels that come in, in development are large pieces. So we're not going to go back to a, you know, a five, 10, 20 acre parcel and get a park out of it. It takes a larger development and most of those are gone now.
Thank you, Mr. Fair.
Thank you.
Do you have any other questions for staff or the, or proponent? Okay, moving on, do we have any public speaking in favor?
We do not.
Okay, any neutral?
No, and I don't have any in opposition. The only one that I got was, what was dropped off earlier today. You should have a copy up there, Ray.
I do.
If you could read that into the record.
Now I know why Ryan's not here.
You don't necessarily need to read it, but you do, read it into the record, but you do need to read it and consider it.
Okay. Okay, so is there anyone here that, okay, we have one guy right behind you there, I think. Would you mind handing your?
Oh, I don't have any, I was, honestly, I'm here for something else, but I'm a developer, owns land in the area, I was going to speak on this real quick or?
Yeah, if you wouldn't mind, perfect.
I can fill something out, I can do whatever.
Your name and, your name and address for the record, we'll have you sign up and give it to her after you're done.
My apologies, my name is Parker Robertson, I work for Wadsworth Development Group, we own land at the Point.
Get your address, please.
144 East 1400 South Draper, Utah.
Okay.
Suite 210, 84020.
Thank you.
Sorry. We're a developer in the area, I'm here for a zone change, something else. This impact fee is something that we had heard about and had looked at. I wasn't fully prepared, but I did just take some notes down and looking at it. Commercial impact fees, since this was done in 2012, are up 170% in this new proposed impact fee. Just to kind of compare that, inflation approximately over that same time period is up 16 to 17%. to seventeen percent from what I could see. So you have commercial up one hundred and seventy percent, manufacturing up one hundred and eighty-one percent, offices up one hundred and seventy-three percent, multifamily up one hundred and seventy-five percent. Single-family dwellings off of the smaller dwelling size, the zero-to-three-bedroom single-family dwellings, are up two hundred and twenty percent, which amounts to three thousand five hundred and seventy-eight dollars per single-family dwelling. I understand the need for impact fees. As a developer, we're very conscious of impact fees. I guess my question without having had time to dig through all the materials is, in order to provide the same level of service, which was talked about, you know, raising impact fees to meet the new demand and continue level of service, are jumps that large necessary? Impact fees, you know, as she spoke about, are meant to cover the cost of growth, and Idaho has a lot of advantages over, say, the state of Washington when it comes to development and being a developer and attracting tenants that want to be, and it's cheaper. It's cheaper to do business here. Taxes are lower here. It is a more attractive place to be than just across the border. And by raising these as much as being considered, I personally believe there's going to be some negative impacts in terms of growth, that it has the potential to stunt growth. I mean, we're talking, if we were going to go out today and build a hundred thousand square feet of retail, which is hard to do in this environment, per the impact fees as they exist, it's about two hundred and seventy thousand approximately, I think it's two seventy-one per square foot. Under the new adoption, it's over four hundred thousand square, over four hundred thousand dollars in impact fees. And that's a lot. And just looking at transportation, impact fees for commercial, sorry, just pulling it up real quick, the new streets impact fee for commercials, three dollars and one cent. In brief looking, every district in Spokane City, a large city where you'd expect, where we would expect impact fees to be higher, only one use has a higher impact fee than that, and that's gas stations. Has a higher road impact fee than that. I understand the city's need to have a balanced budget and to have parks and to have surplus and to be a place that people want to live. But just as a developer, I just wanted to kind of voice my concern on those issues. Thank you.
Thank you. I'll remind you to please fill out the form and bring it up. Thank you. I think that was neutral.
I didn't take it as neutral.
I wasn't sure. So has everyone here on the commission had a chance to read the document in front of us?
Yes. I did.
Did he list in there, Ray, the, I know he had some neighboring municipality fees. Did he list the impact fee in Coeur d'Alene? And is it accurate?
I don't see actual, I see these sewer cap fees, but not impact fees, which is not necessarily what we're looking at tonight. So I'm not sure if the two pages in the back are necessarily applicable to what we're talking about tonight. City Hayden sewer utility fees with regards to collection system, et cetera. Between that, yeah, that's just, that's a, different than impact fees. And Amber, will you remind us who supplied this to us?
His name is?
Howard Burns. It's on the bottom of the third sheet.
Oh, Howard Burns. Okay, thank you. At five oh two South Rocky Point.
Thank you.
Everyone had a chance to go through that thoroughly to your content?
Yeah.
Okay. Bill, you have any rebuttal?
I do not this evening. Basically, we, you know, as we have stated, the city's adopted a growth pay-for-itself philosophy that has driven our impact fees. And Julie has outlined the very thorough methodology, excuse me, the very thorough methodology and the thought process that we've gone through there. So our action this evening is looking for recommendation to city council for adoption of the impact fees, as Julie has presented.
I have a quick question. Are we basically kind of playing catch-up because that we waited so long in doing a new study and a new impact fee feasibility?
I believe there's some catch-up. I believe that there is price increases, as Mr. Fair spoke to, and those are across the board with every single thing that we touch as well, so.
And if I could add, the last one was during a bit of a recession. A recession impacted years, so our growth rates in that model brought down the monies received significantly. And so it didn't take much longer after we adopted that. The economy turned around, and we've been growing at a significant faster clip than what was in that previous model.
I don't see any signs of slowing down until we run out of land.
Okay. Any more questions for Bill or staff before we close the public hearing? Seeing none, close the public hearing and open it up for discussion. Ross, what do you think?
It's a hard pill to swallow for developers especially. I know when we have to increase, but I, I mean, we're growing so fast and there's so much going on that we have to catch up and then get ahead of. And I think we need all these things. I think it's a shared, the equity is shared pretty good around, to developers, our new housing, to commercial and everything. So it's a good plan.
Yeah, you know, Julie and her crew did a very good job. It's very detailed. They've showed statistics and showed methodology, and it's hard to argue that. It is, it is hard to swallow in my line of work. It's hard to sit with clients and explain to them that they have to pay cap fees and impact fees and why there's two things and what the difference is, and all the piles of fees on top of fees. And when they go up, that is hard. And I can commiserate that things are expensive, and it costs more to make roads and buy trees and parks and buy land too, materials and land. But that goes for the developer side too. And so that, the problem that I always have with that is that gets ultimately passed on to the consumer a lot of times. Not on everything, not on some development work, but a lot of times on single-family homes or daycares or assisted living. That assisted living product's going to finish, and it's just going to cost more for the elderly to stay there, you know? So that gets passed on. So I'm always very wary of that. But on the flip side, I think this was well done, and I don't know if any other option. We're growing so fast, there's a lot of infrastructure, there's a lot of parks, there's a lot of streets and lights and public safety. And so I get it, but it is, it is hard to always explain that to clients for sure. And when the fees go up, it seems like they always go up. And it does, I was a little shocked seeing this figure seven or eight, six, seven or eight, right in there of the, some of them did jump quite a bit. But I do like how they're broken out much more specifically, and I can appreciate that. I just know that the daycare people will not be very happy about the five forty-four a square foot, but.
Yeah, it seems, I mean, effectively, in looking at this, looks like we're recommending the maximum legal amount, and it's basically a doubling. And the number one concern I hear from people in the community is that housing costs are climbing so fast, and that's a supply, a problem with supply. There's not enough supply. And if costs go up, and this is a small fraction of how, where the costs are going up, but it adds. And so we're just making it more difficult for people to develop single and multifamily, which we have a problem with it being affordable right now. And so if we make it more difficult, we're going to decrease supply and costs are going to, this will have an effect and continue to increase costs. And like on a multifamily development, you know, I have people that, you know, we're short on staff at where I work, and we, new people try to come in and they try to find housing. And apartment housing right now is where most of the people that I work with live, and they can't find housing, and they can't find something affordable. And if we're going to put in, you know, a new category of intermodal paths, and for someone to come in and put in, you know, a four-hundred-unit complex, like we've seen a few go in, which helps to give some supply and helps to lower the price, you know, if they're going to have to spend two hundred and fifty thousand dollars on intermodal paths to put in their four hundred units, it's, it doesn't help. And it pushes people further away into Coeur d'Alene or Rathdrom. And I don't, I don't like seeing that because we already compete with those other markets for employees. And so I like to see housing in this area for our people that we want to have here working, living here, working here. So I don't know what the number is, and, you know, it looks like a lot of work was put into this, and it was weighed carefully, but it's definitely concerning seeing a doubling.
You know, I, there was an impact fee workshop, and this was before, I guess, coronavirus, so it must have been in 2019 that the city put on. And I attended that, and they were kind of going over some of these numbers, just roughly. It wasn't, you know, nothing was set in stone like it is here, but I was really surprised, kind of shocked at the percentage of increase at that time that they were looking at. And I have to say, you know, fast forward a year and a half later, and I, I look at it a little differently now because I see the growth and the impact that that's had on the city. And I think that, I think that it's, it is, it is a big increase, it's a big jump, but I think it is necessary.
Yeah, I mean, I think the number, you know, it's almost doubling. I think that is tough to, but then the reason I ask the question of how often this is done is because if it was done in 2012, and we probably started that during the recession, like John said, there probably is some catch-up in here among everything else, the growth that the community's going through. So I think it is almost a necessary evil that we have to kind of raise these, raise this up to be prepared for the growth that, you know, seems to be just coming no matter, no matter what happens. You know, maybe this does slow it down a little bit, who knows? Time will tell. What I would hope we can do in the future is that, and obviously there's been circumstances beyond our control recent, past a year or two, is try to get this on a, really a good schedule where we do this every five years and don't let it go five, eight, ten years, and we're doing this and looking at another huge increase. That's, you know, the sticker shock with the number. We can do this every five years, that would be, I think would be better. But I understand the reason for the increase.
My thoughts on it are, in a lot of ways, I'm a little conflicted. I'm not necessarily a big fan of adding a new impact fee that wasn't in the, in the old, in the old impact fee study. I also think that the multimodal pathway, I think there's a lot of, I think there's a lot of ways that as a, it's going to hurt, I think, some of the larger, probably more well-thought-out-planned communities or residential communities that we have, like Montrose or North Place or Foxtail, and the ones that have pathways integrated into their design and the bike paths are part of the city's transportation master plan that have the, you know, it's all part of a typical cross-section for a collector's street or an arterial street and all those things. So I really think that there needs to be some way for, I mean, I get having an impact fee that keeps little things from falling through the cracks, you know, the single-family house across the street over here on Fourth Avenue, paying for that because they're not going to build any multimodal pathways as part of their, their house, but when it's part and parcel to a much larger development that has pathways integrated into it, I think there needs to be some sort of relief. And I'm going to look towards Warren and trying to figure out a, probably a good way to wrestle that through our impact fee ordinance and how to make sure that that is equitable so that a developer who is not, so a developer is putting in, you know, four or five miles of bike lanes and pathways and things like that, doesn't also have to pay and get double-dipped for a multimodal pathway. But on the flip side of the coin, this is the other thing, is that I do a lot of work in the city of Hayden, and ten years ago, they went through and they redid their impact fee ordinance, and they significantly cut their capital improvement plan and dropped their impact fees, and now they're behind the eight ball when it comes to having funding to even handle background traffic that runs through their city. So there's definitely the flip side to this. I understand the increase. I think Dave was very eloquent in making the point that land prices for parks has not gone down. It's only gone up commensurate with land prices around here, which has far exceeded So even though I'm not a big fan of the multimodal, I think there's a way that we can make sure that it's, it's fair. And I also think that, as I went through and I read this and all of the, Julie did a great job. It's very, very detailed, your, the way you go through and talk about state code as well as Nolan Dolan federal, federal court or Supreme Court case law and how it's backed up. It's very thorough. It does a very good job breaking down the numbers, breaking down the, how it, how it's calculated. I really, really appreciate that. The numbers guy in me really appreciates that. And so I think that as a capital or as a impact fee study, it's very well-written and it's very defendable. And so that's really all I have. So I guess with that, I'll look for a motion.
I can try it. I'm not sure. So I move to forward to city council, the impact fee adoption 2021 with a recommendation for adoption.
You have a motion?
I'll second.
Have a motion and a second. Roll call, please.
Happy?
Yes.
Schlothauer?
I'll abstain.
Latham?
Yes.
Kimball?
Yes.
Carey?
Yes.
Stephenson?
Yes.
Passes. All right, on to our next public hearing of the night.
And Ray, may I be excused?
And Mr. Latham is now excused, and we may not see him ever again. Thank you, Mark, for your help. Will the record please show that Mark Latham has now left the building? So on to item B of public hearings, the Solomon Foundation Special Use Permit File U S E zero 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 four dash twenty twenty. Ethan Porter to present.
Good evening, commissioners. My name's Ethan Porter, one of the planners here with the city, here to present the Solomon Foundation Special Use Permit. The owner of this property is the Solomon Foundation, and the applicant here tonight is Olson Engineering, and they are requesting that the special use permit be approved to construct nineteen duplex lots on four point seven five acres within Community Commercial Services zoning district per the high-density multifamily zoning district standards. per the high-density multifamily zoning district standards. So looking a little bit at the Community Commercial Services zoning, residents may be allowed within the zone at densities permitted by the high-density multifamily residential zone by special use permit when they will not compromise present land uses per Post Falls Municipal Code. Looking here, you can see the area in hatched in red here is the special use project location. You have Horse Haven north of it running east-west and it's within proximity, pretty close to Highway 41 running north and south. Charville Road is over here to the west as well, running north and south. Then you have 16th to the south, running east and west. So currently from this image, you can see that it's pretty much vacant land around besides the real-life ministries to the west there, their sports complex and fields. Looking a little bit more at the project details, they are proposing 38 units. The density for this special use permit would be eight units per acre and the water provider would be Ross Point Water District and sewer would be taken on by the city of Post Falls. Here is zoning, our zoning map shows that hatched in black this time, it's within the CCS zone as well as the surrounding area and then you have some R1 located to the west here for single-family homes and then there's R2 further south, south of 16th. But as you can see, Highway 41 is a commercial corridor, so you'll mostly see commercial along that way. Looking at the future land use designation for this site, in the pink is business commercial, which this area, the project location hatched in black, falls within business commercial. I'll explain a little more in detail in the following slide, kind of what that means, but also you can see to the west, low-density residential here as well as some medium-density located to the southwest and then commercial in the red. Looking at the business commercial future land use designation, it promotes a mixture of moderate, high-density housing types, promotes walking distance to city center neighborhood centers, which there aren't really nearby, but there is a commercial corridor, like I mentioned, Highway 41, as well as civic uses and other amenities. The real-life ministries does provide that sports complex nearby. The implemented zoning for this is listed as CCS, which this site location is zoned as that, so it would be implemented in this zone. Looking a little bit more at the area surrounding this, you can see that, the map that I have displayed, the light pink is a proposed subdivision that's included with this special use permit, but you'll see that kind of in the near future, it's a Nicholson Commercial Center subdivision, but it is projected to be commercial lots through this pink shaded area. And then here you can see that the residential lots are proposed in that project area. To the west of them, there's a proposed food court that's currently under site plan review right now. There's also a real-life ministries proposed school for the future at this location in the yellow and then obviously you have real-life ministries to the west and their sports complex and fields. Looking at the review criteria for special use permit, we look at whether the special use will or will not conform to the purpose of the applicable zoning district. The purpose of the CCS zone is to support a wide array of retail services and other professional uses as well as multifamily residential uses. Also with this, that provides, this particular special use permit would provide a missing middle housing type duplex, which you don't see a whole lot of throughout the city of Post Falls, there are some, but there is not a large percentage. As you can probably see in your staff report, I believe there is some breakdown of that in there. This would support a work, live and play environment, being within a walking distance to a commercial corridor. As Highway 41 further expands and develops, you'll have more opportunities for commercial uses and basically opportunities within that area. This isn't with, this density is within the allowable density permitted for the R3 zoning district per the special use permit. Looking at the next review criteria, we're looking at whether the special use constitutes allowable special use as established by the chapter for the zoning involved, basically make, being compliant with applicable laws, ordinances and statutes and regulations with the city and state. In our Post Falls Municipal Code, you can see there on the land use table that three or more units per structure is an allowable use in the CCS zone for special use permit. The next review criteria, we look at whether this proposal will or will not be compatible with the health, safety and welfare of the public or with land uses in the vicinity. Stated in the staff report, this would not negatively impact health, safety and welfare. Does provide housing to support commercial employment centers and also provides the eighth-mile backage road for further traffic flow to and from property, which I will explain further in the slides coming up. Also, fire protection will be handled at the time of subdivision construction review. Looking a little bit more at the site, duplexes will, developments are generally one, two stories in height and will have to comply with our residential duplex standards and Post Falls Municipal Code 182430. That north picture that you see there on the screen is looking south from Horse Haven Avenue. It's vacant, as you can see, and the bottom picture is looking to the west from Highway 41, right there at the real-life ministries sign, which most of you probably know. Here's our official bulk and placement table in Post Falls Municipal Code 182040. Right there, kind of boxed in red, you can see R3 duplex, there's 35 height requirement as a max. You have your setbacks listed there as well as the max density of 12 units per acre and so they're proposing eight, as I mentioned earlier. Looking more at the transportation aspect of this proposal, you can see that the proposal, the proposed special use is not anticipated for to produce any impacts that would adversely impact the adjoining transportation systems. The existing roadway network has the capacity to handle the proposed land use. There is an internal private street that would provide access from the duplexes to 16th Avenue and Horse Haven Avenue and like I mentioned before, it's within proximity to state Highway 41. So access point locations would be reviewed and approved at time of subdivision construction review as well. This picture's a little bit hard to see, forgive me, but I'll kind of do my best here. You can see state, this basically discusses road classifications for the city. State Highway 41 is a principal arterial. You have a major collector, excuse me, minor collector in the yellow along, my mouse can show up, along Horse Haven here as well as Charville Road running north and south. And then 16th is your minor arterial, I'm sorry, major collector on that as well. And then this blue, which you can probably not see very well, is the eighth-mile backage road that's proposed for development along state highway, state Highway 41. Looking at the last review criteria, we, looks at the proposed use being compliant or not with the goals and policies found within the comprehensive plan. Here you can see goal one is grow and sustain a balanced resilient economy for Post Falls, providing community prosperity and fiscal health. Goal seven states plan for and established types and quantities of land uses in Post Falls, supporting community needs and the city's long-term sustainability. The policies I'll go over, or the policy, one that I'll go over has multiple sections. I'll go through that as they support this, these goals. Looking at policy one, it supports land use patterns that foster long-term fiscal health of the community, maintain and enhance resident quality of life, promote compatible, well-designed development, implement goals and policies of the comprehensive plan related to master plan and our facility plans. That last one there is basically the staff report and this presentation combined, as I discuss multiple areas of the comprehensive plan and other plans as far as transportation, so on and so forth with those. Looking at parks, this request is within the minimum, minimum standard of the one-mile service area of a city-owned property for a future park as well as Tolmore Park, which is situated north of proposed development. Future Highway 41, like I mentioned, pedestrian trails as that gets built out will have more connection and connectivity, excuse me, for the pedestrian network. So further connectivity will happen as development occurs along Highway 41. Here you can see, kind of, it's a little, little bit difficult, but project locations right here, you have the existing Parks Mile buffer, which is located right around here. So we can see that it's well within that Mile Parks buffer, so being serviced by a park, that is. Looking at maintenance and enhance, maintaining and enhancing a resident quality of life, a lot of this is already said, but we are near Highway 41 commercial corridor, there's not a lot of duplexes in the city, this would promote kind of a more middle housing type to be developed, the options for work, live, play in this area and they would have to meet the buffer requirements for Post Falls Municipal Code 182040 as well to ensure that buffer requirements are met and that they're not being affected by commercial services around them. Promote compatible, well-designed development. The school is nearby, which, near residential, which is typically seen. You can also look at the pedestrian connections that I've been talking about for walkability and then utilities are available to the site. These were the agencies that were notified for the proposal. And then what we received back was a neutral comment from Post Falls Police Department and a neutral with general comments from Department of Environmental Equality. I would like to entertain any questions you may have for staff at this time.
Do you have any questions for Ethan?
I, I do have a question on the, so there is, there is no connection between 16th and Horse Haven?
There...
That will, that would, I guess, have direct...
So on the screen actually now, that new public road that you see will be going north and south from Horse Haven to 16th, that's proposed as the eighth-mile backage road.
And is that proposed in medium term, which means 2022 to 2027?
That'll basically be done during the subdivision of this entire area and so that Nicholson Commercial Center subdivision that moves forward in the near future, they will be providing that backage road during that time.
So there is, but there, there won't be any connection to 16th from this proposed development?
Oh, I see what you're saying.
Until, we don't know when, but in the future, but it won't, but very well the duplexes could all be built out prior to any connection that they would have to 16th, direct connection.
I guess you could say that, but there will be an internal street and I'd probably let the applicant speak more on that as far as how they want to develop and the timeframes for that. But, but yes, I guess that, that would answer your question, yes.
Okay.
I have a question. Why the R3 duplex instead of R2 duplex?
The code states that it's just per the R3 multifamily density is for that, so it, it really just bases it off of in code for the R3 instead of the R2. There's no difference between them, they're the exact same, it's just a matter of if you're zoned R2 or R3. The code will just state that further, that special use permit, if you're doing multifamily, will be under the R3 multifamily basically density. And so it, it's just how it's stated in code for that. John can correct me if I'm wrong.
Yeah, and the request was to construct duplexes in that, so the special use permit would be restricted to what their ask was for the special use permit. So, I mean, you wouldn't see, you know, if they wanted to do in a multifamily apartment project down the road, they would have to modify that ask of the special use permit if that's what you're concerned about.
I'm just curious why it's not, why they went with the three.
And it's a lot like what Ethan said, when you look at the CCS descriptor, says you can build multifamily per the R3 standard. It really doesn't make a difference whether it's R2 or R3 since they're more or less the same in lot sizing and density and disposition.
I figured there's a reason, I just don't understand what it would be, so.
I have a question, is there any buffer of any type going in between those two residential that are on 16th, those large acreage residential? Or is that part of, is that land part of the ownership of all this anyhow or?
Can you restate that again, I'm sorry, near?
The two, there's two single families that bet 16th, that are on 16th, this comes almost up to that, is there anything to buffer this, this development?
There is, yeah, and I'm trying not to get too much into the subdivision that's going to be in the near future, but there, if you can see on the screen, lot one, are you talking about that existing house that right there?
Yeah, there's two of them there.
Yeah, so that'll be most likely from what I've been told by the applicant, be removed.
Okay, I just figured it must be part because there's no, yeah, okay, thank you.
Any more questions for staff?
Yeah, I got one more. As 41 is built out, what is the intersection at 16th and Horse Haven going to look like?
I would let Rob from Engineering kind of speak on that.
Good evening, Commissioners, Robert Paulus, Assistant City Engineer. With the Highway 41 widening project that will be starting up around the end of this month, within the next two years, we will see that the intersection of 16th and Highway 41 will be a fully signalized intersection and then the intersection of Horse Haven Avenue and Highway 41 will be converted to a three-quarter turn movement. That means that traffic on Horse Haven Avenue will be able to make a right turn onto Highway 41, but traffic on Horse Haven will not be able to cross Highway 41 or make a left turn onto 41. Traffic on Highway 41 will be able to make left or right turns onto Horse Haven Avenue. Anything additional? No, thank you. You're welcome.
Any other questions for staff before we turn it over to the applicant? All right, applicant.
Okay, thanks. Thanks, Ethan.
You have 15 minutes, please state your name and address for the record.
Jeremy Terzouli, I live on Kathleen Avenue in Hauser, Idaho. I am representing M.A. Nicholas and Company on behalf of Olson Engineering. I am a project coordinator with Olson Engineering. Brought Eric with me today if we have any specific questions on the engineering here and I want to talk about the Nicholson Commercial Center and the duplex sites that we are requesting the special use permit for. I've done a lot of these presentations and Post Falls does a really good job, it makes my presentation feel a little bit inadequate and a little bit redundant, so I'll apologize for that. So this is, first few slides are going to kind of give us an idea of what we're looking at here. Ethan's done a good job, I put the real-life ministries location on there for reference, Ziggy's to the right, which is to the north of this project and he was dancing and treading a little lightly with the overall plan here. Olson Engineering represents Mike Nicholas on the entirety of this whole project. The commercial pad sites along the 41 corridor between Horse Haven and 16th, the backage road, the development of the commercial sites, the special use permit application and hopefully the construction of these duplexes, it's all going to go down at the same time. Infrastructure's going to go through that public roadway, sewer, water, we've coordinated with, with city staff, with the water district, with Idaho Department of Transportation. A lot of work and thought has gone into this project. Like I said, the pad sites along 41, the backage road, we're working and coordinating with the new school site with Genesis Prep to create connectivity through their parking lot because fire has asked for alternate methods of ingress and egress through their development. There's a lot of cooks in this kitchen and it all comes together hopefully this year so that backage road gets built this year, infrastructure goes in, rows these duplex sites. And this is a zoomed-in view of what that road would look like into those duplex sites and then on the far left of the screen would be that connective road to the parking area for the new Genesis Prep school. So like I said, this all is one big web work, it's all working together here. So again, sorry for the redundancy, but here is a zoomed-out view of the star representing the area internally in the entire subdivision that we're proposing these duplex sites on. So these are the criteria that, that you're to be reviewing when, when considering this request. A couple of them are, are simple yeses as far as is a special use, what we need to, to apply for here and then I'm going to get into some of the ones that are a little bit more subjective. So this is the future land use map and this is lifted straight out of your comprehensive plan and it shows as we move to the bottom of the screen, north, so on the 41 Mullen intersection, 41 Seltice Way, 41 Interstate 90, you have more of the traditional commercial users and as it moves north, it's sort of... And as it moves north, it sort of bleeds out into this, this commercial, neighborhood-type commercial zoning that is supposed to work in conjunction with residential uses. And you kind of see that intensity go down as you move north. Again, our site located where the star is. So, we're next to the major commercial corridor of Highway 41. There is compatibility with the existing and proposed uses. Obviously, working with city staff, it, there's going to be pedestrian connectivity, multimodal paths along Highway 41, as per ITD standard and city standard. This will create additional buffering between that commercial center and the R1 zoning as we move west. And again, we're not asking to annex anything, we're creating infill on vacant land within the city right now. So, these are quoted right out of the comprehensive plan as far as the land use categories. And you'll see the commute, the commercial, talks about future changes to retail, office, commercial, and talks about including multifamily housing within that zoning. The medium-density residential, which I know this is an R3 as per the request, but we know what the end use is, it's going to be duplexes, and that is simply density-driven why that request. So this is technically a medium-density request. And again, it talks about medium-density using blending commercial, residential, and it may be considered in areas as they develop, provided they feature higher traffic volumes, they're located and designed to function as pedestrian-friendly. Such patterns should feature interconnected streets, allowing easy all-modes access to adjoining neighborhoods. And we feel, we've accomplished that with the overall plan of this development. And the business commercial, it talks about integrating commercial uses specific to neighborhoods. And so the point I'm making with this is that all of these land use categories recognize a degree of overlap and interconnectivity within them. This is an example of just that. So this is at Pole Line in Charleville, a little bit north of this project. And if you look, I don't know if I have a cursor here. So, here we've got Pole Line, which is the collector's street. We've got Highway 41. We've got some commercial uses along the major collector, or minor collector, I'm not sure of the classification here. We have some more of the multifamily cottage and condo-style housing, intermingling with commercial users. And then deeper in off of the major thoroughfares would be the traditional R1. Another example of this right here, just a little bit further. Highway 41 here, multifamily here, more of the mid-rise multifamily. We've got cottage-style housing here, which this is technically single-family, but on much smaller lots. Traditional R1 here, and likely to be commercial adjacent to Highway 41 as it develops. More classic and older version of this is going to be the interchange at Highway 41, Interstate 90, and Seltis. We're all familiar with this one. Got a major commercial corridor here along Seltis, both sides, as you move further west, move over the railroad tracks. We've got multifamily intermingling with commercial uses. We've got condo plats, cottage-style housing, and a blend of multifamily. And then again, traditional R1 as we move out. So, you kind of see a theme of this tiered design, meaning higher-impact commercial and industrial uses, multifamily intermingling with commercial, then some more multifamily, and then we move to traditional residential. And it seems to work well throughout the city. Now this is, you might ask why I'm bringing up an area over in Hayden. This is exactly what we designed this commercial center around. So this is Prairie Ave. This is the Prairie Shopping Center over here. This is Walmart, Highway 95. And, so this is Cornerstone, right? So we all know, it's the Holiday Gas Station, Discount Tire, some multi-tenant commercial, the Plasma Center here. And so we designed this to, like I said, we kind of took this design and used it. And so you might ask, why not keep this commercial? These commercial areas back here, they lack visibility from Highway 95. Access is a little more difficult. And I'll bet, most of you guys don't even know what these businesses back here are, because you can't see them from Highway 95. Mr. Young's here, he could probably speak to this, because...
These are his property.
There, there's a reason they're still vacant. They don't have the visibility and the access that these ones here do. They would be more suited for office, or like Young Construction, you don't need that visibility. When people want Young Construction, they go there. Copper Basin Construction's building here on the corner, it's a beautiful building. They don't need the visibility. So, these would be more of a destination, kind of a service-based retail or office. And we're just noticing a real increase in office vacancy relative to our community. It's still relative, but it is going up by comparison. And there is a much greater need for multifamily in our analysis. And that's represented on this slide. I apologize, very difficult to see. But this over here, these are my recent data from Valbridge Appraisals of office vacancy rates, which are hovering in that five, above 5% countywide. This one to my right is going to be residential rentals. And again, it's real difficult to see, so I apologize. But this latest one right here is summer of 2020. And that vacancy rate is less than 1% right now countywide, which is absurd, but it is true. And we see that trend continuing. Obviously, the Commissioners have discussed that a little bit earlier. It's challenging right now. So, in closing, we believe that the request is consistent with the comprehensive plan as outlined. We believe it's consistent with the zoning designation currently and the overall neighborhood context, that sort of tiered as we move from commercial corridors back into traditional R1, having that mix in between. The future land use map in the comprehensive plan, we believe it aligns perfectly with that. Infrastructure is immediately available. We've had numerous conversations with the Water Districts, with utility companies, with city staff, the city engineers. We're ready to go on this. We believe it's going to add to that supply of rental units that's desperately needed in our area right now for that workforce housing. It's proximity to Highway 41 and Interstate 90 for people to get to work, it's, it's well-positioned in that way. It is a continuation of existing growth patterns, in meaning, again, to go back to that sort of tiered idea of commercial users, industrial users, higher-impact residential or higher-density residential, and then more to traditional R1 zoning. And there is a concern or some criteria that we talk about, furthering public health and safety. This will be designed to, to be in conformance with city code, working with Transportation Department. And so those, those are sort of nonissues here as we see it. And that concludes what I've got, and I will take any questions.
Do you have any questions for the applicant?
I don't.
I've got one quick question. Under the conditions of approval, there's one potential condition of approval with regards to the baggage road being constructed as part of this. Would you be okay, would the applicant be okay with that baggage road being constructed the entire distance from 16th to Horse Haven as part of this?
Yeah, it's pivotal to our whole development. We can't plat and get building, we can't get building permits until we get a plat. This plat is part of a larger plat, and the special use permit overlays the portion as outlined. It all kind of rests on itself.
So it's all part and parcel, and, and so when this, if this were to develop, it would all, that baggage road would connect those two, so anyone living there would have two ways out. They'd go north or south.
Absolutely, that is the intent, and I don't think Fire Department would let us build it any other way anyway, so. But yeah, that is the intent. If we get the special use permit, the plat application has been applied for, we hope to begin construction on that road and all the infrastructure within the next 90 to 120 days.
Okay. That's all I had. So, is there any public in favor?
None.
Any neutral?
None.
Any opposed?
None.
I assume there's no need for rebuttal?
Okay.
So, before we close the public hearing, is there any more questions?
Well, I would like to just offer one more item. I'm sorry, this isn't a rebuttal, and I'm sorry for the breach in etiquette, but we did receive a, a letter in support from Genesis Prep Academy that we've been working closely with to create that connectivity to their school, and they're extending their support of the project.
Okay.
So, thank you.
Thank you. Any questions for staff before we close the public hearing? All right, seeing none, close the public hearing, and open it up for discussion. Mr. Stephenson, do you have any comments, thoughts?
You know, when I first looked at this, I was, I was a little wary, because it's just the long plot of land in between what could be two commercial areas. But, you know, coming out of it and seeing the whole picture of it, it's one development. If everything develops as it is, I think it definitely meets the criteria. And it would be, it'll be nice to see it has that commercial, it has that missing middle, the duplexes. And so I think it'll be good. It's nice to see they have the support from the school, that there's other plans for the, the school and what they're doing over there. And it seems like everybody's on the same page, so it will get developed, and it'll be a nice, nice little infill project.
Nick, Joe?
I agree with everything he said, plus I just think that we do need the duplex style or some type of a mid-range there, housing from the apartments to the larger single-family. So, and that's about all you could put there comfortably, I think, with the, the stuff for the Real Life Ministries on the one side, and then commercial going around along 41. I think that'd be a perfect buffer there.
Okay. Mr. Schottauer?
I think it's what we need.
I agree.
Nancy, all right. I think it's an elegant transition from that commercial that's going to front Highway 41 to a school and a, and a food court. So I think it's kind of that nice little transition where it'll, it'll blend nicely and fill in that gap instead of leaving a bunch of vacant commercial in there. So, I think that's very good. And I think it meets the requirements of the special use permit. I think they've demonstrated all of that, as well as, I think that the conditions of approval are, are appropriate as well. So, entertain a motion?
I will. I move to approve the Solomon Foundation Special Use USE-0004-2020, finding that it meets the approval criteria in the Post Falls Municipal Code, condition to, I guess, subject to condition 1, as contained in the staff report.
My second.
You have a motion and a second? Roll call, please.
Stephenson?
Yes.
Carey?
Yes.
Kimball?
Yes.
Schottauer?
Yes.
Hampi?
Yes.
All right, motion passes. But would you like to take a quick five-minute break? I think it's probably appropriate. We'll call a five-minute recess.
I appreciate that.
All right, I will reconvene the planning commission meeting. And we're on to item C of public hearings. The Saint Joseph's Special Use Permit File U S E zero 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 one dash two zero two one. Ethan Porter to present will open the public hearing.
Good evening again, commissioners. Ethan Porter, planner with the city, here to present the Saint Joseph's Special Use Permit. The owner of this property is eight four nine Seringa Street LLC and the applicant is H two A Architects. They are requesting that the permit, the special use permit be approved to construct an ear, nose, throat and allergy clinic on point nine acres of a limited commercial zoning district site. Here you can see the project hatched in red. It's on the northwest corner of Seringa and Mullen. Currently, the site is vacant, which you can't really see, but it is vacant currently. The zoning for this is pink, which in the legend corresponds to limited commercial. You see that to the north and the west, it is R one, single-family residential. To the east and south, across Seringa and Mullen Avenue, you have commercial CCS zoning. The project, the city post falls will take on the water as well as the sewer for the project. And looking at the future land use map, it is business commercial located in the pink. You see north, you have low-density residential in the yellow and then the red is represented by commercial for future land use designation. Looking at business commercial provides a wide variety of general service, retail, professional office, mixed uses that serve the regional residents as well as the traveling public. The implementing zones is included with L C, which is limited commercial, which the site is zoned as. Looking at the review criteria, whether this special use will or will not conform to the purpose applicable zoning district. The purpose of the limited commercial zone is to permit neighborhood-compatible commercial retail and service uses of modest scale and areas not conveniently served by existing or proposed commercially designated lands. Support a wide variety, a wide array of retail and service uses, including other professional uses as well as multifamily residential uses. So here, this special use permit provides a professional and specific type of service regarding healthcare for the public. If the proposed, if this proposed special use permit is to be approved, the proposed development will be required to complete the site plan review process to meet city code. Looking at the next review criteria, whether this constitutes as an allowable special use established by this chapter for the zoning district and complies with the ordinances, regulations and laws of the city and the state. Looking at the land use table, under health and human service, clinics aren't allowed use through the special use permit for the limited commercial zone. Looking at the next review criteria of whether the proposed use will or will not be compatible with the health, safety and welfare of the public or with land uses in the vicinity. The staff report indicates that this would not negatively impact health, safety and welfare for this special use permit. The buffer requirements for the residential uses to the north and northwest would be applied as well through the site plan review process. There provides a commercial service to keep the public healthy and safety, being a ear, nose, throat and allergy clinic. Here you can see kind of the existing site as it, as it is. It's vacant and the top picture is on Mullen Avenue, looking north at the site and the bottom picture is along Seringa Street, looking to the west at the site. Looking at the transportation aspect of the project, the proposal, the special use is not anticipated to produce any impacts that would adversely affect the adjoining transportation systems. The existing roadway network has capacity to handle the proposed land use. It is within close proximity to Mullen Avenue, which is a minor arterial, and Seringa Street, which is a minor collector. Access point locations and fire requirements would be reviewed and approved at the time of the site plan review. And looking at that last review criteria, we look at whether this will comply with the goals and policies found with the comprehensive plan. Goal number seven states planned for and established types and quantities of land uses in Post Falls supporting community needs and the city's long-term sustainability. And looking to support that through policy, one, we support, our state supports land use patterns that maintain or enhance community level service. This is an expansion of an existing business already within the city, so they're looking at expanding to a new site. It would provide services to a larger clientele group with the move. They'd be able to serve a larger group of people and potentially new clients. And then the service that they provide would increase quality of life for residents since it is within the healthcare profession. Looking at the agencies notified or listed here and comments that we received back were neutral from the Post Falls Police Department and neutral from the Post Falls Highway District. I can entertain any questions you have for staff at this time.
Do you have any questions for staff?
No, I don't.
Yeah, is there a height or story limitation on the, in the zoning? I mean, could they?
Correct.
What would it be?
Yes, so for limited commercial, I believe it's thirty-five feet per our official welcome placement table.
Okay, thank you.
Any more questions? Okay, applicant. Please state your name and address for the record and you've got fifteen minutes.
Keep it short and sweet.
You want me to bring that up?
Dick will do that. You know how to bring it up?
I think so.
Okay, perfect. I'll make my part of this short and sweet. My name is John Young. My address is two zero five one East Woodstone Drive in Hayden, Idaho. I represent Young Construction Group. We're building the facility and I'm also the managing partner of eight forty-nine North Seringa LLC. My partners in that entity are the primary owners of Saint Joseph's Ear, Nose and Throat. So Saint Joseph's Ear, Nose and Throat will be relocating to this new facility as it is approximately fifteen hundred square feet larger than their, well, provided you approve our SEP, approximately fifteen hundred square feet larger than the facility just across the street. So with that, I'll let Dick go ahead and talk about all the technical details. Thank you.
Thanks, John. I'm Richard Colburn. I live at one one three seven oh North Trafalgar in beautiful Hayden, Idaho. And good evening, commissioners. I'm going to be very brief. I don't have a lot of information to add to this other than what we submitted as part of our application. I just kind of briefly go through the project if I can find it on here correctly. Again, it's relatively simple plan on a relatively simple site. It's a flat site. The floor plans are roughly sixty-two hundred square feet, single-story. Generally speaking, public areas are in the south. Private areas for the doctors and employees are on the north. This is the break room, the little doctors' offices and also for some procedures and so forth. The site plan, which is right here. Again, relatively simple site, buildings in the northwest corner. The residential zones on the left here, we're buffering. There's a church here, medical offices here and across the street is Northwest Specialty Hospital as well as all the other medical buildings. The driveway, we're gonna, the access point, we're gonna work with the engineering staff, the city staff to locate that appropriately once we put in this roundabout they're proposing. So again, relatively simple. This is the exterior. We think it's kind of a modern approach, modern aesthetic, but at the same time, we're using some northwestern or you might call them mountain-type materials to soften it, make it a little more inviting and warm. That, that would be a view from the southwest, like on Mullen. So the main entry is around the corner. This is the waiting area. This is more of a view flat on, just looking straight north. This is a view as you start approaching Seringa, so that you can see the main entry. There's a drop-off here so they can get undercover. And then there's a little view more, looking more southwesterly. So this is Mullen down here and Northwest Specialties is across the street. So we feel we've got a pretty nice-looking building here. So beyond that, I really don't have a lot to add other than just in closing, we feel this is an appropriate use for the area. It fits well within the surrounding uses around the area and especially considering there's the medical office across the street to the south as well as to the east. So that's really my presentation unless there are any questions you have.
Do we have any questions for the applicant? Okay, thank you. Seeing none. Amber, do we have any people to testify for?
No.
Neutral?
No.
Against?
No.
All right, see anybody out there waving their hands and so means no rebuttal. Any questions for staff before we close the public hearing? Seeing none?
No.
Close the public hearing and open it up for discussion. Anyone?
I think it fits there. I mean, it's medical, it's, that's what that whole corridor seems to be coming, so I think it would fit in there great.
Okay.
Yeah, same thing. My only concern would be, and they've talked about numerous times, would be the buffering between the commercial and the residential behind it, but I think that's already been talked about and will be taken care of.
Okay. Looks well done.
Yeah, I think it's a good fit.
I like the fact that where, where they placed it and the fact that it is an ENT, their business hours are gonna be during the day, not at night, so they're not gonna have business lights going on during, right next to the houses. So I think that's fantastic and I think they met all the criteria. So do we have any, I'll entertain a motion?
Yep, I'll do it. I move to approve Saint Joseph's Special Use Permit, file name U S E zero 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 one twenty twenty-two, adopting the facts and findings in the staff report.
Got a motion? Do we have a second?
Second.
Got a motion and a second? Roll call, please.
Hampi?
Yes.
Schlothauer?
Yes.
Kimball?
Yes.
Carey?
Yes.
Stephenson?
Yes.
All right, motion passes. On to item D under public hearings, the corporate park zone change, file R Z N E zero 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 one dash two zero two one. Laura Jones to present, open the public hearing.
All right, good meet, good evening, commissioners. Laura Jones, Associate Planner, City of Post Falls, here tonight to introduce you to the corporate park zone change. The owner and applicant is the Point Partnership LLC and then the requested action tonight is to rezone approximately twenty-three point two-one acres from community commercial services to the requested industrial zoning designation. Location of the project site is going to be north of Point Parkway and Interstate ninety, directly east of North Beck Road. You can see in the red hatching on the map. Currently, the site is vacant with no significant topology or vegetation. The City of Post Falls will provide both water and sewer. Surrounding zoning, currently to the north is Community Commercial Services, which has been recently developed with the UPS Distribution Center. To the west is the Cisco Industrial Site. South, we have another Community Commercial Services and the Maverick Travel Center. And then east is currently vacant, Community Commercial Services, but it has recently gone through a special use permit for the Amelia Apartments and that is going to be located about, I think, four hundred and thirty-ish feet away from the subject property. Staff looks at six zone change criteria, the first being that amendments to the zoning map should be in accordance with the future land use map. Looking at the future land use map, the designation is business commercial. You can see industrial to the west there at the Cisco site and the other surrounding properties are also business commercial. The implementing zoning districts, industrial is not explicitly called out as one of the implementing zoning districts. However, the requirement of being consistent with the comprehensive plan focus area is called out. On that note, the comprehensive plan focus area is the river bend focus area and the comprehensive plan specifically states that this area should continue to evolve attracting commercial businesses, high-tech companies, hotels, entertainment establishments and potentially additional residential. That potential to attract the high-tech companies as well as the existing president in the river bend focus area of the industrial uses is consistent with that comprehensive The second zone change criteria is that it be consistent with the goals and policies found in the comprehensive plan. Those goals and policies are outlined extensively within the staff report. And then the zoning is assigned following consideration of such items as street classification, traffic patterns, existing development, future land uses, community plans and geographic or natural features. As outlined in the staff report, the zone change is not anticipated to have any negative impacts on the city's transportation network and it is in conformance with the anticipated land uses and trip generations with the, within the city's transportation master plan. Water and sewer are both available to the site and the requested zoning is in conformance with the land use assumptions in the city's water and sanitary sewer master plans. And the site has no geographic or natural features that would affect development of the site. The third zone change criteria is that commercial and high-density residential zoning is typically assigned streets with a higher road classification. The site is along North Beck Road and West Point Parkway. Both of those roads are minor arterials incompatible with a proposed zoning. Limited or neighborhood commercial and lower-density residential zoning is typically assigned for properties as they proceed further away from higher intensity urban activity. As noted earlier, the site is just north of I ninety, which connects the site to the higher intense urban activity and it's an appropriate location for the proposed use. Lastly, industrial zoning is typically assigned for properties with sufficient access to major transportation routes and may be situated away from residential zoning. The site has direct access to North Beck Road, which allows for connection to Southeast Way to the north and Interstate ninety to the south. The approximate location of the site is going to be about four hundred and thirty-eight feet away from the Woodbridge South subdivision. See if this mouse will work. Right here's Woodbridge South. And then it's also going to be about four hundred and fifty-six feet away from the Amelia Apartments site, which is outlined here in black. So that is in line with the comprehensive plan and the zoning criteria. This is the list of agencies that were routed to provide comment on the subject property and the zone change. Of those three responded, the Post Falls Highway District and Post Falls Police Department were both neutral. State of Idaho Department of Environmental Quality also provided comment and they were neutral. They did provide general comments, which is actually specific to development, not necessarily the zone change. So those criteria would be looked at, at a later date and it's actually their jurisdiction and their requirements. We just help kind of facilitate it all. At this moment, that concludes my presentation on corporate park zone change. I can answer any questions.
Do we have any questions?
I don't.
Seeing none. Applicant, please. Your name and address for the record?
Parker Robertson, one forty-four east fourteen hundred south, suite two ten, Draper, Utah, eight four zero two zero. Yes. I work for Wadsworth Development Group. We are the owners, I mean, Point Partners LLC is the owners, owners of Wadsworth Development Group, also owns Point Partners LLC. We own a significant portion of land over there still, over at the Point, between Cabello's, Walmart and Cisco area. We really feel strongly about the development here. I don't have a fun slideshow, but we feel really strongly about what we're putting in here. We recognize this as kind of the entry to the rest of our project over there and when we originally acquired the land... And when we originally acquired the land over a decade ago, we had grand visions of a massive retail center. And the way things have gone, that's not going to be the case and we still hold out for a significant amount of retail. But with Cisco where it's at, with U P S where it's at, and with our location strategic to the border of State of Washington and I ninety and Southeast Way, we feel very strongly to do, our plans currently are to do two large industrial buildings, one totaling approximately two hundred and forty-eight thousand square feet and the other approximately a hundred and sixty thousand square feet, with one main truck courtyard in the middle. Buildings are built, built one at a time. There'd be concrete tilt. They would not be metal prefab, which is what the U P S is, which is what a lot of, a lot of industrial in the market is the cheap metal prefabrication building. We don't want to go that route. We feel there's a strong need for distribution centers in this economy and we think these concrete tilt buildings will provide a good look, will provide numerous access for employers, job seekers, and we feel really strongly about this, this zone change. We recognize that we are, you know, as noted, in proximity to a neighborhood. The truck courtyard would be situated between the two buildings. Buildings would be oriented north and south, putting the truck courtyards between them, so essentially between U P S, the buildings, and the freeway would be where the truck courtyard would be, which, so any noise would come from there. But again, we feel sufficiently far away from both the single-family neighborhood and the new apartment, proposed apartments. So I'm here to take any questions.
Okay. Do we have any questions for the applicant?
I'm not, I'm going to ask you this, I'm not sure if you know, but the, so the property that's between the one that you want the zone change for and the apartment project that's going to go on?
Yes.
There's just a sliver, well, I.
Yes.
Do you, do you know what that, what the intention is for that or?
I do not. We are not the owners on that. That is Watson, I forget.
And it's not developed?
It's not developed, it's vacant land. Everything over there is undeveloped. I very recently learned of the apartments that were planned for, not, not that they're far away, but the four hundred and fifty-eight approximately feet away. And yeah, so I don't know what's planned for that. I know along the north of the substation, can we pull up like a little, just one of the maps, sorry? Just one that shows where the sewer lift station is, so I can kind of point something out, just a little notch, sorry.
No, I appreciate you.
Because there's some natural, there's already some easements in place with the city because of the lift. There's a sewer lift station that's notched out, that's perfect. What, is this a laser correct? Okay, so this is a sewer lift station owned by the City of Post Falls. There's actually sewer pipe that runs right here that would be rerouted as part of this project. We've been working for a while with engineering on that and trying to make sure that we're going to have a amenable solution for everyone there and I feel like we've reached that. But existing on the north from Expo Parkway all the way down to this lift station is a fifty-foot-wide access easement.
Okay.
So that easement isn't going away. We are looking at providing additional access to this lift station for engineering, but we do not plan on, and the city does not plan on, this fifty-foot access going away. So that already, we can't control what goes here and I understand the city has to kind of be aware of everything going on, but I, you know, there is, there's fifty feet here already built-in buffer north of there and then south, I mean, I'd have to look at our plans, but our retention is planned down here and there is, I don't know if it's fifty, but there's probably about twenty-five feet right now planned, at least twenty-five feet here. And I think code requires ten feet with certain landscaping or, and we're well above that on our side of the property line too, so. Any, any development to the east would also probably have some setback requirements and buffer requirements, so we feel.
Yeah, that definitely answers my question.
Okay.
Truck access then to your facility would be off Beck Road?
Correct. There are two access points planned. As part of this, we're doing, so it's these three parcels that are being rezoned, one, two, three. As part of the replating will be an access point here, approximately, you know, working with the city, and an access point right here and then an access point close to that property line right there off of Beck, so.
Thank you.
Do we have any more questions for the applicant?
Thank you.
Okay, seeing none. Amber, do we have anyone to testify in favor?
No.
Neutral?
None.
Opposed?
None.
All right, seeing none of that, I'm sure there's no rebuttal. So before we close the public hearing, I'll ask again, do we have any questions for staff?
No, I don't think so.
Seeing none. Close the public hearing and open it up for discussion. Ross, what do you think?
I'm surprised there's nobody from Woodbridge here. But I, I think that they're well-protected by the layout of the buildings and the neighboring building and I think it's a good fit for the area.
Okay, Nancy?
I'm going to agree. Yep.
Okay. Thank you, Joe.
Yeah, me too. I, I know we've been trying to encourage growth that way, so that's a good thing. So.
Yeah, I think, same thing. I think it's a good fit there as long as we abide by the buffers and the setbacks. I think we're going to be fine and anything that could possibly bring some new jobs to the area would also benefit for the city.
You know, this is one of those interesting things where I think, I like it, I think it's a good thing. I think when the zone changes came in for Woodbridge South and then the special use permit, they talked about how having residential people nearby and building a population base will bring businesses and this very well might be that coming true. So having a, you know, a population base that's close by can, you know, give people the opportunity to live, work in very close proximity. I think that's a great thing. So I'm in favor of it as well.
So for a motion?
All right, well, I can give it a shot.
Go ahead.
Okay.
All right. I move to recommend approval of, I move to recommend approval of corporate park zone change R Z N E dash zero 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 one dash twenty twenty-one, finding that it meets the approval criteria in the Post Falls Municipal Code.
We have a motion?
I'll second it.
A motion and a second, roll call please.
Stephenson?
Yes.
Carey?
Yes.
Kimball?
Yes.
Schlaughour?
Yes.
Hampe?
Yes.
All right, motion passes. On to new business. John, I don't see any on there. Administrative reports?
None as well.
Commissioner comments, go to the order, anything?
Do we?
None.
Well, I had a question.
Oh, yeah.
Do we have a new member? I see a, a name and I thought I saw something.
So that we are in a transition to where Mark Latham won't be here as part of the Planning and zoning commission going forward. We have a new member, Kevin Ward, which will be here at the next public hearing where a formal introduction will occur.
Okay. Perfect, thank you. And next item of business is adjournment. Take a motion.
I move to adjourn.